Jane, welcome back.
Thank you, Scott. Very good to be with you.
It's great to have you. So Xi Jinping and President Biden had a two-hour call on Friday, the first since the Russian invasion of Ukraine. And Biden warned Xi against giving military or economic help to Russia. Here's National Street Advisor Jake Sullivan last week.
There will absolutely be consequences for large-scale sanctions evasion efforts or support to Russia to backfill them. We will not allow that to go forward and allow there to be a lifeline to Russia from these economic sanctions from any country anywhere in the world.
Jane, you have been reporting for years on the Biden-Xi Jinping relationship. What might the calculus be right now for Xi Jinping in this moment?
Well, I think Biden is in a good position really because he has known Xi Jinping since 2011 when they were both vice presidents and they met in China. So I think in this phone call, he was able to deliver a personal message saying to the leader of China, "Don't try and give the Russians any military aid." Nothing.
And for China, what is at stake here?
For China, it's really, I think, a matter of using this war in Ukraine to make the United States weaker. China wants the United States to be in a position where China can prevail in the long run. And they're doing everything they can to say NATO instigated this, ergo, United States instigated this war. And so they're trying to put the blame on the United States.
Yeah. And what's your sense of how connected Russia and China are? From far away ideologically, a lot of Americans would assume that these countries are very aligned. What's your sense?
Well, I think in one sense, you could say that Xi Jinping has made a good friend out of Putin. And China wants Russia to prevail here. On the other hand, they want to stay out of it. China is not mediating. They're not really doing anything except giving a rhetorical slam at the United States.
Yeah. And as far as trying to stay out of it, if China weighs in too much here, what could be the cost? I mean, if a new version of the Iron Curtain goes back up, if there is this technology decoupling, as a lot of people and you have been reporting on, what are the implications for China?
China has benefited a great deal in the last decades from stability. That's how its economy has grown. That's how it's become the second biggest economy. That's how it's become 10 times a bigger economy than Russia. China really wants to make sure that its economy is not hit more than it already is. They're already facing downside on COVID. The economy is not growing as fast as they would hope. Official number is 5.5% for this year, but people think that's quite optimistic. So it looks as though Xi would be saying, if he is saying anything to Putin, you know, just don't destabilize the world too much. We've all got economies to manage.
Finally, Jane, let me ask you about Taiwan. It is a self-governing island off of mainland China, 23 million or so people. Xi Jinping has pledged, threatened to bring it back under Beijing's control, talking about it in terms pretty similar to the rhetoric Putin uses. "Ukraine has always been ours." What does Russia's war in Ukraine do for China's interests to potentially use?
The 2:00 PM session of Roanoke City Council for March 21st, 2022 is hereby called to order. And I will ask our clerk, Ms. Susan McCord, please call the row.
Mr. Bespich?
Here.
Mr. Cobb?
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Here.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Here.
And Mayor Lee?
Here. And a quorum, Mr. President. Today, our invocation will be delivered by the Reverend Terry Kemp, children's pastor and ministries director for Fort Chiswell Church of God. And following Pastor Reverend Kemp, we will, I will lead you in the pleasure of leading. So Reverend Kemp, you will come forward. Thank you for being with us this afternoon.
Good afternoon. Let us pray. Oh, mighty God, we thank you for this day and your many blessings and abundant goodness you provide to us. We thank you for this opportunity to serve this city and this community with our talents and our abilities you have given each of us to use for your glory. We ask your anointing on each member of this council and city leaders and their endeavors to represent the citizens of this city with godly-inspired wisdom and vision so that your will shall be done. Let us acknowledge value and the viewpoint shared today so that we may not be divided by our differences, but united in our mutual pursuit of accomplishment. We pray for your divine inspiration for the decisions made in this chamber today and in the days to come. Keep your protective hand over our city and lead us into even greater achievements in the future. Let each of us approach our daily responsibilities with integrity, a desire for excellence, and a spirit of cooperation and unity for the enduring benefit of the citizens of this great city. In your holy name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend Kemp. And welcome, everybody, to our first session of today. We're also meeting tonight at 7:00 PM. The first item on our agenda is the announcements. And the council of the city of Roanoke is seeking applications for the following current vacancies and/or upcoming expiration of terms of office. Building and Fire Code Board of Appeals, one vacancy, and that person, we're looking for an architect. Roanoke Arts Commission, one vacancy. The Roanoke Public Library, the Roanoke Public Library Board, two vacancies. Virginia Western Community College Local Advisory Board, one vacancy. Visit Virginia's Blue Ridge, one vacancy. And I want to encourage any and all our citizens who would like to serve on a board or a commission, please submit their application. We always welcome those citizens who want to step forward and help us govern in this seven-time, all-American city. And you can do that by accessing this city's homepage to complete an online application for any other vacancies that I just mentioned. And you can call the clerk's office and they will guide you through that process. Very simple process. So we welcome any applications to these boards and commissions. All right. Item number two is the presentations and acknowledgements. And I want to, at this time, be recognizing officers in the Roanoke City Police Department. So I will ask the chief of police and his staff to join me at the podium.
Captain.
Okay. All right. Well, I'm going to change names. Good to have you here.
Thank you.
All right. On March 9th, Chief Roman presented Sergeant Thompson and canine, how does that pronounce, Loken?
Loken.
Loken?
Yep. Loken, just like that.
Okay. Loken, with the department's Award of Valor for their actions taken on July 24th, 2021. While on patrol, Sergeant Thompson and his canine partner were aware of a string of burglaries from various, from vehicles beginning, being done by an unknown subject. While patrolling, a call requiring, regarding a larceny from the vehicle that was dispatched into the downtown area. Sergeant Thompson observed a subject that matched the description of the suspect near the Hotel Roanoke. Sergeant Thompson confronted this subject. While speaking with the suspect, he fled on foot. Sergeant Thompson and the canine gave chase. Despite repeated commands to stop, the subject continued to flee on foot. Sergeant Thompson deployed his canine partner, who caught up to the subject and began engaging the subject. Instead of giving up, the subject fought with the canine, a lot of bravery in line, fought with the canine, and attempted to stab the canine. During the struggle, the suspect dropped the knife and utilized a handheld taser on the dog. And Sergeant Thompson, who was attempting to take him into custody. The subject then attempted to stab the canine with a pair of garden shields. The suspect bit canine, Loken, during the apprehension. The subject was identified and found to have outstanding warrants in North Carolina, as well as being involved in the incidents that were occurring in Roanoke. So please join us in congratulating Sergeant Thompson and canine, Loken, for their keen investigation senses as their action in this incident allowed them to interdict a career criminal and teamwork and fearless disregard for their own safety as a statement to the bond that the team of Sergeant Thompson and his canine have for each other. So let's recognize Sergeant Thompson and his canine. All right, Sergeant, you want to say anything? Or, Loken's not here, is he?
Unless he's outside in the car.
He's outside in the car, okay. All right. Officer B. Smith. All right, good to see you again. On March 9th, Chief Roman presented Officer B. Smith with the department's Award of Valor for his actions on September 29th, 2021. Officer Smith was on patrol in the areas, in the area of the A&amp;A Mark in the 600th Block Mormon Avenue Northwest, when his attention was drawn to two males that were acting suspiciously as he passed them. Officer Smith circled the block and parked to monitor the individuals when almost immediately, he heard multiple gunshots coming from inside, from inside the store. Officer Smith immediately radioed for additional officers, and as he exited his patrol vehicle, with his canine partner came, one of the males began to exit the store carrying a firearm. Officer Smith immediately began giving verbal commands to the subject. The male complied, and upon a second officer arriving on the scene, they took the subject into custody. A search of the subject revealed that he was in possession of a firearm and other evidence. As officers entered the store, they located the clerk who had injuries sustained in the shooting and was deceased. The subject was placed under arrest. Please join us in congratulating Officer Smith for his selfless actions during this incident as he selfishly confronted an armed individual who had just committed a violent crime. As a result of his actions and bravery, this violent offender was arrested, and the family of the victims will be afforded closure for the loss of their loved one. Thank you so much. Let's get him in here.
Just real quickly, again publicly, I'd like to congratulate the officers and their canine partners for their highly exemplary actions on the night. These are the kind of officers we have. These, too, are a representation of the professional, courteous, proficient, and effective officers that we have. So I just wanted to take this opportunity to, again, thank you all for your service to this great community that we live in.
Thank you, Chief. Members of council, Trish Madam, Vice Mayor.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say to both Sergeant Thompson and Officer Smith, thank you so much for your courage. Being a police officer in this day and time is certainly not easy. But I just want you to know that we appreciate what you do to protect the residents of this city. You put your lives in danger every time you get into that car and your canine. So I just want to say thank you on behalf of the residents of this city for your leadership, your courage, your bravery, and for protecting us. Thank you.
Counselman, call.
Thank you both very much. Thank your canines for us, too, however you do that. This is just, hearing the descriptions of what you, what you did is just kind of a microcosm of the realities that you face every day. And so I just echo what Vice Mayor White Boyd said. We're really grateful for you and thank you for all that you do.
Counselman Bespich.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Sergeant Thompson, Officer Smith. You know, I think it's far too easy for many people in our community to take our police department for granted. And they expect you to be able to control everything that shouldn't be going on all over the city. I just want you to know that this council does not take you for granted. This council supports you in every way that we possibly can. And as my colleagues have said, we appreciate your bravery, and we appreciate the fact that you're out there day after day after day helping to keep our city safe. Thank you so much for everything that you do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, guys, go on in for the photo op. know. Because a lot of times, what they get oftentimes is negative stuff, but want to let them know how dedicated and committed they are, police officers that we have in this city are. All right. Our next item, Madam Clerk, is hearing of citizens upon public matters. And we have four citizens that have signed up to speak. And I will call them in the order of their arrival. Anyway, let me, let me, yeah.
I'll be glad to call for you if you'd like.
Okay, can you?
Yes. Our first speaker is Mr. David Garland.
All right. And the topic is fraud in public grants and the council vacancy. During the past, during last week's trial of former councilman Robert Jeffrey for defrauding the Economic Development Authority through the coronavirus aid relief and economic security grants program known as CARES, it became clear that the review and approval process for CARES grants was hurried and lacking in depth. Former EDA staffer Sean Atkins testified that there was heavy reliance on the good faith of grant applicants to provide honest answers, and a simple affirmation by telephone was routinely all that was needed, even if the submitted proposal raised red flags. And in the case of Jeffrey's applications for two separate entities, Jeffrey Media and RLJ Property Management, he claimed to have five or more full-time employees, meaning each worked more than 30 hours per week or more than 130 hours per month, fairly simple test. Yet, at most, there was one full-time equivalent, that being Mr. Jeffrey. The significance being that applicants with one to three full-time employees could obtain a maximum of $1,250, while those with four to 20 full-time employees could get up to $7,500 in his applications requested and were approved for $7,500 for each entity. Now, there's no indication from court testimony that employment numbers claimed by applicants were confirmed by unemployment insurance fund records or Virginia tax records or federal tax records. There's no indication from testimony that applicants were required to submit copies of W-04 withholding forms for employees or even list their names and titles, or required to provide any particular evidence of claimed employment staffing. And another minimum criteria of the grant was that the business be in existence at the start of 2020. And one of Jeffrey's businesses did not even have legal existence through publicly available state registration until May of 2020. So the lessons learned from this matter should not be lost. An effort should be made to discover other similar frauds in the public. I urge the council and the city's Director of Finance and Municipal Auditor and the Economic Development Authority, as the quasi-governmental city affiliate, to identify, I mean, to implement a general review of all CARES grant recipients in order to identify other frauds against the program. I'm not familiar enough with the program to offer much detail, but at a minimum, it seems appropriate to utilize other government record-keeping systems, such as employment tax and unemployment tax records, to cross-check, guarantee, grantee employment levels during the relevant time periods, and to retroactively require some further proof of employment levels to be submitted from grantees, or use other methods such as site visits and so forth. Another matter which emerged during trial was that Jeffrey counted workers he classified as independent contractors as being full-time employees. Now, even though as independent contractors, they're not subject to employment tax withholding, social security withholding, or employer contributions to the unemployment fund. They aren't typically eligible for unemployment benefits. Further review of CARES grant recipients should inquire into whether employees for grant purposes are being treated for other regulatory purposes as employees or not. the fourth-place vote getter would have been among the winning candidates. Thank you for consideration of these matters.
Mr. Garland, let me ask you, let me just say something. If you've got any questions about what Mr. Jeffrey did and what he didn't do and what was left, I would suggest you take it to the Commonwealth's Attorney. Anything that needs to be investigated or you think was left out of that?
Oh, I was speaking to other potential, that it highlights potential issues across the entire grant program that may, that appropriately should perhaps be looked, given a second look. They were in a hurry at that time. They could go back with a more thoughtful eye now and review those grants for issues of the same sort that were part of the matters involving Mr. Jeffrey.
Okay, thank you.
Our next speaker is Barbara Dirk.
Mayor, members of council, city manager, happy belated birthday, Mayor. And you know, your birthday is a special day, but I believe that every day is a birthday. Every day is the first day of the rest of your life. I'm going to talk about E-words, encourage, enable, and empower. And the residents of the Roanoke Valley, the citizens can and complement the efforts of paid businesses that bring people to Roanoke, either, either commercial businesses or conventions or the things like the Blue Ridge Marathon and the Ironman. They all are wonderful events to happen to Roanoke. And a lot of the people that come to these events decide that they want to live in Roanoke. And thank you very much for, for making that possible. That some, some, thank you for being a responsible city council. Thank you for supporting healthy lifestyles by funding walking and bicycling infrastructure. Thank you for supporting the Ironman and the Blue Ridge Marathon and, and the new cycling team that we have here. Thank you for moving the municipal building bike rack just so I can, don't have to carry my bicycle up the steps anymore. I really appreciate that. Thank you for prioritizing funding for bike lanes and sidewalks, and we certainly need more than that. Mr. Taylor Dunn said the other day that each curb cut costs four to $5,000, and we certainly need more, more of those. Sidewalk repairs need to be made to prevent lawsuits when people are tripped up by the uneven sidewalks, and so I'm really happy that that's happening and will continue more with budget funding for, for walking and bicycling. Please update the website so when we report places that need to be repaired, potholes in streets and uneven sidewalks on I Roanoke, that they go to somebody that can respond. I ask you to budget a mayor's bike ride. I know Mayor Lee has participated before in the mayor's bike ride and request that in 2023, I believe, all of the Greenway is going to be connected, and that's a wonderful time to reach beyond Roanoke, to say on Board of Supervisors chair and to, to the mayor of Vinton to have a valley mayor's bike ride. Whether we want to do it internally or whether we want to request that the Regional Commission be responsible for the bike ride or whatever, that that be done. I ask for this year, 2022, that you recognize May 20 as Bike to Work Day and that you choose to either walk, bike, bus, is how we put it, walk, bike, or bus on that day and use alternative. Now, you could use a scooter, you could use a skateboard, or you could use some other, an energy pack, one of those fly packs, but, but I encourage you to walk, bike, or bus on May the 20th. And, and people of all ages can participate, so encourage people to do, to walk, bike, or bus to school, to work, or to wherever they are, are going to get groceries. Again, encourage, enable, and empower, and thank you again for being a responsive city council and listening to the citizens of Roanoke. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker is Shaheed Omar.
Good evening, the mayor, city council members. Dear people, please be aware this is an open letter in an attempt to express some feelings and thoughts that a lot of us share in the African, local African-American community. It's about Robert Jeffrey. First of all, let it be clear that we think the whole trial had too much coverage. Had it been a white member of the city council, total situation beginning to end would have played out totally different. I want this published as an editorial. The mayor's a member of the city council was treated like a gang member, local gang member, if not worse. Few years ago, another member of the local city council busted marijuana, never saw the inside of a jail. Of course, he was white. Plus, he was caught driving on influence, called DUI, I believe. His name was Rosen, young white boy who had a habit of smoking reefer in the public, was a city council member, and the whole white community treated him like he was Jesus. Of course, the African-American community went AWOL. Yes, our brother Robert Jeffrey made some bad decisions, but he didn't rape anyone, he didn't rob anyone, he didn't physically abuse anyone, he didn't molest any children, didn't beat up his wife nor physically attack any council members. Yet he was treated as if he had done, if he had, if he did any one of those actions. He was indicted for mishandling some money, and it wasn't in the millions like white men take daily. Judge Carson, why was the man immediately locked up after being convicted? Where was he going? See a flight risk? The man is on the Alice and he needs a kidney transplant. Jeff Sturgeon did a poor job in the story, which you only mentioned in one sentence his health problems. He made front page Roanoke Times almost every day of the, of the trial. We have people in the Roanoke City that are killing people every day with guns. We can't explain where all of them coming from. It don't make front page. We have child molesters, even bank robbers, women who are killing men. It don't make front page. Not only front page, but the articles are so long, it takes up space on all pages. MS-13 gang member charged with killing folks, he didn't make front page. Jeff Sturgeon did a poor job covering the story. What did he do? City council members, all of y'all, you're African-Americans. I didn't hear one of y'all protest about nothing related. You mean you didn't feel any compassion for the brother? Look at his face. Can you tell he is physically unhealthy? We call it sick or ill, physical, physically in bad health. The man came to court rolling in a wheelchair. Guess you were saying you were playing games. Sad day in Roanoke City, you African-Americans and city council, my friend, Mayor Sherman Lee, I hope you know the same type of treatment is waiting on you. Have a weakness and let it be exposed, let it be exposed. If you're not white, you're going down. Those writers like Jeff Sturgeon can't wait until you break the law. Y'all asked the man to resign. Why? Because it had some negative reflection on his council? No, it didn't. Wasn't anybody thinking about him having no impression or no, no reflection on the character of the council? He said he was resigning because, he said he wasn't resigning because he had been, he hadn't been to court, found guilty until he was still innocent, until then he was still innocent. Now y'all put, put him off the council. He must not have, must not have made any intellectual impressions on any of y'all because y'all treated him like he stink, like he had a terrible odor. He embezzled some money. Y'all don't know any African-Americans ever took any money? Oh, yes, that's a white man's crime. We don't play that. His mother, Evangeline, Evangeline Jeffrey, has, has had enough good reputation in Roanoke City to warrant more respect out of the newspaper than he, than he did. Jeff, you didn't mention any of her work. I think the council response and no talk about what was happening or what has happened is a terrible reflection on the lack of your professionalism, sentimentality, no sense of compassion. You should have been at his trial just to hug his wife, show her some support. Hey, man, hey, the man didn't do anything but take some money. White folks all over the country take millions of dollars every day. I'm talking about millions of dollars. Jeff Sturgeon talked about the fact that he owed $100,000 to NNEO. NNEO is not a, any real large organization. I used to serve on the board. They don't handle millions of dollars, and Jeff Sturgeon would have never mentioned them and the work they do in the, in the article they asked him. Then Ms. Carter, President of the Board, was at the trial talking about justice was served. The NNEO would have survived. I'm sure they had insurance to cover their loss. I believe that because it was an African-American that took their money, they should have been more forgiving. They never mentioned a word. They must have changed a lot because the board members that I served with would have never prosecuted him. They would have worked out a deal where he could work and make restitution and pay back the money by producing something with his intellect. The man is pretty intelligent, just weak morally. He just likes so many of us, especially you white folks. There are many of you taking money right now. This is, that is culturally who you are and how you carry it. For us African-Americans, it is rare, it is rare for us to take money through embezzlement. We rob people, we literally take money. My time is up. Seems like y'all cut my time short. I'll, I'll give you the rest of the night.
Thank you, Mr. Sturgeon. Our next speaker is Owen McGuire.
Did you want to give a copy of your letter to the court?
I'm sorry. I'll send you a couple.
Thank you so much.
Members of council, Mr. Mayor, thank you for allowing me to speak here today. I want to speak about a proposed disposition of some property on Brambleton Avenue, specifically 24, 24 Brambleton Avenue, which is part of Fishburne Park. For some of the newer council members who may not have been around last five years or so ago, we have been down this road before. And when I say we, I'm talking about myself, who's, lives right next to the park, and also members of the Grandin Court Neighborhood Association. I am currently president of the Grandin Court Neighborhood Association. I know you haven't even discussed this yet, but I want to give you a little background about what's going on down there. The city has been trying to divest itself of the property of the Blackwell House that is on that, in the city park as you pull in there, Fishburne Park. They've been trying to do that for a number of years without success. About five years ago, they almost had it sold to a city employee at zero cost, albeit the employee was going to have to put a certain sum of money into it to make it livable. They had proposed originally to give that employee, the employee, a full acre of land, which by the way, it appears like the city is wanting to do again. That was actually reduced to like a third of an acre at the time. And at the 11th hour, the city employee backed out for various reasons, fulfilling the contract, and the city allowed them to back out. Since that time, the house has remained vacant, which is fine, so. And at that time, ourselves, we, Neighborhood Association, secured 600 signatures from local citizens requesting that the city not sell this property. And that is still the position of our Neighborhood Association, which by the way, has not been notified in any kind of way of what the disposition they are proposing of this land and of the building. Again, it's our hope that the city would maintain ownership of this property, whatever happens. And more, more importantly, that acre of land is very important. It's a highly-used area. People walk through that every day. If you go over to that area, you'll see trails that have been actually cut through there, cut through there so that people can walk and access the rest of the park. Has a great benefit in that respect. Also, there's, there are very mature chestnut trees that are harvested every early fall by many people over there. That would be threatened by a possible, whatever the distribution comes to be. Let's see. The land was purchased in 1935 by Roanoke City from a private land development company. And at that time, I think it was rather obvious that that land is adjacent to the Fishburne Park property that was given to the city prior to that, and the city wanted to expand the park for that reason. And since then, that park has always been zoned Parks and Recreation. And that's what we believe it should always be, is Parks and Recreation for, it should be part of the public domain for all the people of the city of Roanoke to use. The house itself, the house itself, we know, can identify, it has amount of age on it, okay? But it has never been established to have any particular historical significance. That being said, it's almost like the city wants to use the house as an excuse to give away this land. Why somebody would want to buy a full acre of land that they would have to maintain, mow, and have liability for, I don't know, unless the city would give them an opportunity to develop it. And I hope the city is not going to start selling off our precious parks for somebody else's hopes of developing the land. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me today.
Thank you. Mayor, that was our last speaker.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're now move down to our consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by members of city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of the items. If discussion is desired, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered I want to call your attention to four requests for a closed meeting. One from the mayor to discuss the two upcoming vacancies on the Roanoke City School Board expiring June 30th, 2022 pursuant to Section 2.2-3711 Code of Virginia as amended. And for consultation with legal counsel to discuss a personnel matter requiring the advice of council where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711 Code of Virginia as amended. And one from the city manager requesting that council convene in a closed meeting to discuss the disposition of an approximately one-acre portion of city-owned property located at 2424 Brambleton Avenue Southwest where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711 Code of Virginia as amended. I want to call your attention to four requests for a closed meeting. One from the mayor to discuss the two upcoming vacancies on the Roanoke City School Board expiring June 30, 2022 pursuant to Section 2.2-3711 Code of Virginia as amended. Two from the city attorney requesting that council convene in a closed meeting to discuss the acquisition of publicly-owned property, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711 Code of Virginia as amended. And for consultation with legal counsel to discuss a personnel matter requiring the advice of council, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711 Code of Virginia as amended. And one from the city manager requesting that council convene in a closed meeting to discuss the disposition of an approximately one-acre portion of city-owned property located at 2424 Brambleton Avenue Southwest, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711 Code of Virginia as amended. All right, any more motion for the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Best pitch.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the consent agenda is approved. Thank you. We're now down to the regular agenda. Item number five is public hearings, none. Petitions and communications, none. Item number seven is reports of city officers and comments of the city manager. Item 7A1 is the acceptance of the promoting safe and stable families COVID funds from the Virginia Department of Social Services to assist families with housing-related costs such as rent, deposits, utilities, furniture, and similar material supports to promote family stability. There's a resolution. Move the resolution.
Second.
Madam Clerk, could you please read the title paragraph?
A resolution authorizing the acceptance of COVID-19 funds from the Commonwealth of Virginia Department of Social Services and authorizing execution of any required documentation on behalf of the city.
All right, is there any discussion by members of council?
I just had one question from Mr. Cowell. Is there a separate application process for these funds or it will be handled the same way as some of the ARPA funding?
I believe it's going to be handled the same way. Is that correct, Steve? I'm looking at Steve.
It is actually a grant process through the Virginia Department of Social Services where we're already applying.
Right, but the applications were individuals that would be pursuing.
They'll be families that we're assisting currently through the Department of Social Services.
So it won't be that open application process?
It won't be an open application, already the things that we're already assisting.
Right, not as the ARPA program that we actually have underway currently then, so thank you.
All right, any other discussion? All right, Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Best pitch.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye.
And the resolution passed. There's a budget ordinance. Move the budget ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the Commonwealth of Virginia for promoting safe and stable families, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2021 through 2022 grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right, is there any discussion from members of council? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Best pitch.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Ms. Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. Thank you. Item number two is the acceptance of funds from the Virginia Department of Social Services for the Independent Living Center Youth, the Chaffee Independent Living Center Youth Transportation Assistance Program. There's a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, can you please read the title paragraph?
A resolution authorizing the acceptance of the Chaffee Independent Living Transportation Assistance Program funds from the Commonwealth of Virginia Department of Social Services and authorizing execution of any required documentation on behalf of the city.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, I can.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Thank you. I just want to briefly make a statement, then I have a question. I read, excuse me, can't talk with this one. I had the opportunity to research the Chaffee Independent Living Program, and I was very impressed with it. That is John H. Chaffee Foster Care for Successful Transition to Adulthood, which is known as the Chaffee Program, and that it provides funding to assist youth in foster care and young adults formerly in foster care with services and financial assistance to promote their transition to adulthood. And then it went on to note some of the activities and programs that include, but not limited to help with their education, employment, financial management, housing, emotional support, and assured connections to caring adults for older youth in foster care. And I did want to say I do support this Chaffee Independent Living Transportation Assistance Program, but this is my question. I noticed that these funds would be used to support eligible youth ages 14 up to 23 with transportation assistance, as the department determines up to 4,000 per youth. And you did mention what some of the funding would be used for, the $30,000, I mean $30,860, which was DMV learners and driver's license fees, driver's education classes, vehicle purchases, and behind-the-wheel. And with Virginia under DMV, you're able to get a learner at 15 and six months. So my question is, how does this program help 14- to 15-year-olds?
I'm going to ask Steve to come up for that one.
Okay.
Yes.
Can you come to the?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yes, this program, it's designed to work with these children as they're coming up, moving toward the independent living. So directly the transportation assistance, I don't know that it's going to impact them quite as much, but it can help us in providing transportation for them to different things. And so that's how it works with the younger ones. And so this was actually made available through Virginia to help produce some additional funds due to COVID for working with that population.
So for the 14- and 15-year-olds, you really don't have much forced transportation, but yet you list them here as being part of the program. Because when I was thinking of it, I was wondering what that'd be like to get them to mentorship opportunities after school, maybe bus passes? Am I in the right place?
Well, I think at that age, you may be doing that. We actually pulled this language straight down from Virginia's grant application. So that's where, you know, a lot of this came from, is directly through the grant itself and what Virginia said. So I think this is actually probably going to be more for the older children.
Than for the 14- or 15-year-olds at risk?
Aye, great, yes.
But will you be looking at anything that you could use this for?
Yes, absolutely.
For the 14- and 15-year-olds?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Best pitch.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the resolution passes. There's a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, read the title paragraph, please.
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the Commonwealth of Virginia for the Transportation Assistance Program, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2021 through 2022 grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right, any discussion, members of council? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Best pitch.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. Item number three is authorization to submit to the Virginia Department of Transportation the required forms to identify the streets added or deleted from the city street system used to determine state maintenance payment eligibility. There's a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to submit on an annual basis a street inventory for state maintenance payment eligibility to the Virginia Department of Transportation upon forms prescribed by VDOT for approval by the Commonwealth Transportation Board in order to ensure the city's eligibility for state maintenance funds.
Is there any discussion, members of council? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Best pitch.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the resolution passes. Item number four is an annual authorization to establish the percentage reduction for personal property tax relief for the 2022 tax year. There's a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
A resolution setting the allocation percentage for personal property tax relief in the city of Roanoke for the 2022 tax year.
All right, is there any discussion among council? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Best pitch.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the resolution passes. I'm pleased to recognize the city manager for any comments that he may have.
No comments this afternoon, so we've got plenty of other business to do, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, item B1 is the execution of a quitclaim deed from the Commonwealth of Virginia to convey the residual right-of-way easements and property interest in connection with the 10th Street corridor between Fairfax Avenue and Williamson Road Improvement Project. There is an ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
Madam Clerk, read the title paragraph, please.
An ordinance accepting certain residual property interests conveyed from the Commonwealth of Virginia through the Commissioner of Highways to the city of Roanoke, Virginia, remaining from project U 000-128-V12RW-203, a street improvements project located within the 10th Street corridor between Fairfax Avenue and Williamson Road Northwest, authorizing the city manager to execute a quitclaim deed dated August 4, 2021, from VDOT, accepting such property interest on behalf of the city, and authorizing the city manager to sign any documents necessary to administer, continue, enforce, and effectuate the quitclaim deed upon certain terms and conditions, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you. Any discussion, members of council? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Best pitch.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Item number 8A is a report of the Roanoke City School Board requesting appropriation of funds for various educational programs, and a report of the city manager recommending that council concur in the request. Donald Caldwell, Director of Accounting, is a spokesperson. There's a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance. Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the Commonwealth, federal and private grant for various educational programs, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2021 through 2022 school grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right, we have one person signed up to speak on this matter, and that is Ms. Brenna, can you reach that mic or do you have another mic there?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor Boyd, Councilman Cobb, Councilman Best Pitch, Councilman Sanchez Jones, and Councilman Moon Reynolds, and City Attorney, Madam City Clerk, and City Manager. It's an honor for me to be here today to speak. I bring you greetings from the Roanoke branch in NAACP. We are aware that there is a budget surplus, and congratulations for the council's leadership and City Manager Baal Cowell for his part in this great success. The NAACP mission statement is ensure the political, educational, social, and economic equality of all citizens, achieve equality of rights, and eliminate race prejudice among the citizens of the United States, remove all barriers of racial discrimination through democratic processes. Two things that bring me here today. One, the city surplus, and two, the Roanoke City Public Schools. Education of our children here in the Roanoke Valley is paramount to us. Yes, some think we are doing okay. Well, folks, okay is not acceptable to us. There remains so much more that can be accomplished with your consideration to increase an equitable amount to our school system. When we think of our students, let's also think about what we can do to help the parents with their educational needs. Superintendent White presented some phenomenal plans in 2020 and 2021. With funding education in our Roanoke City Public Schools can be more than okay. Let's collectively strive to help Roanoke City Public Schools so they can be more than just okay. You know the most precious commodity in our city is our youth. And our youth deserve every equal opportunity that can be made available to them. And by doing this, not only can we dream of that beloved community that Dr. King drew up, we can make it happen. Because it is an investment, and making the investment in our Roanoke City Public Schools, no matter what, you could call it structural, you could call it educational, whatever you want to classify it as, whatever is done, it's going to be done for the betterment of the education of the individuals in our community, and starting with the youth. So we know, and it's a true fact, that we have babies having babies. So how can we make that a successful situation? It can be done by investing in what? Educational facilities that we can make available to parents. I think the reason that we have so much discipline problems now is because something is falling short. And if you have education as a ground well, then we can move forward, and hopefully, once we educate them, they go get their education and come back and make our community better. But it all starts in the school system and what we can do to help them. I thank you for this opportunity. I didn't know I was going to get five minutes, so I prepared for three, and I think I've gone one minute over that. But I thank you for this opportunity, and as I said, collectively, we must move forward together. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenna Hale.
Is there any discussion by members of council?
Well, Mr. Mayor. I think that what I heard my good friend and comrade Hale saying is that it takes a lot from the city and it takes a lot from the rest of the community, too. And I just want to recognize the work that she, and especially Gloria Randolph King and others in the NAACP have done with the Act So program. And I can never keep all the initials straight, but it's an academic competition program that students from Roanoke, young people from the city of Roanoke, have competed in on numerous years now and done very, very well in that. And that's not something that the school board does. That's not something that the superintendent does. That's something that they do as a community. the superintendent does, that's something that they do as a community organization to help students learn more, achieve more, and be better prepared for their futures. So I just wanted to take a moment to recognize that and thank you for what you do for those students across the board with the, with the NAACP Youth Council, but especially the ACT SO program. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Best Pitch.
Ms. Mayor, I was just going to mention, just to put a number out there for Ms. Hale, she indicated, so the school has already submitted their budget, the superintendent submitted the budget, the school board has actually already recommended, and their year-over-year increase for next year's budget is $27 million more next year than it was this year. Of course, some of that is made up by the formula that we provide, and much of it is made up by additional funding that the state is providing as well. So there will be a significant increase in next year's school budget compared to this year's budget.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Mr. Best pitch.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. Item 8B is a report of certain authorities, boards, committees, and commissions in which city councils serve as liaisons or appointees. Are there any comments by members of council?
Mr. Moon.
All right.
Thank you. I, I want to make a plea, pretty much, on behalf of the Equity and Empowerment Advisory Board. We are still in need of volunteers for all five subcommittees. So if you are interested in the work that we are doing on the Equity, Empowerment, and Advisory Board, please reach out to, to myself, or Councilman Best Pitch, or any member of council will get us the message. So I just want to let you know that we are still in need of help to make sure that we can do the work that we want to do in the city, to make sure that, that what we are doing here in Roanoke City is equitable, empowering, and having an impact in this community. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the opportunity.
Thank you. All right. Is there any more comment? We'll go to item number nine, which is unfinished business. We have none. Item number 10 is introduction and consideration of ordinance and resolutions. We have none. And item number 11, and motion, motion, motions and miscellaneous business. Is there any by members of council? All right, there ain't none. Vacants on certain authorities, boards, and commissions, we have none at this time. And so we're moved to the big, important part of the day, which is recess. We're going to be in recess for a closed meeting, and the day after, we'll reconvene here at 7:00. So thank you, and council is in recess.